recognition, Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Waylon also participate on the diversion authority at the main committee. And so today, in recognition of the work that they've done, they each are receiving a plaque from the U.S. Corps of Engineers and FM diversion. And the plaque is actually significant from the standpoint is that this was from the first pour of the inlet in the control structure in July 27th of this year. And so they would like to publicly thank all of you, but specifically Commissioner Campbell and Commissioner Waylon for their work.
I think it looks like a plug, not a plaque.
Congratulations to Kevin. With that, did we get any citizens that called in or anything?
No, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Approval of the bills and vouchers.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we got motion by Jim, second by Kevin, they approved the bills and vouchers, all in favor.
Aye.
Post. Okay, with that, we'll go into our weekly update from our Public Health Director Kathy McKay. I see you brought Cheryl along today. And as I've been listening to these reports and stuff, please speak into those microphones. That's what you're having. I know I have problems when I listen to them, picking up when they're working with those microphones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. I wonder if this is the mic that works better than that one, I'm not sure. It used to be that one that was kind of not picking up so much, but...
You pick up very good.
I think they're both fine, as long as we speak into them. The problem is if there's a conference caller, that that's the box that they need to hear.
Oh, okay.
So it's on the stones online.
Okay. Let me know if you can't hear me, but that's usually not a problem. So as we look at the numbers, you'll notice that, you know, in Minnesota, we, you know, we continue to rise with the positive cases. So 84,949. Now, the Commissioner of Health has reminded us that the increased case findings is also because the testing is increasing. Their robust testing, their goal was at 20,000 tests a day. So they're certainly meeting that and exceeding that on many days. So the fact that they're doing more testing, we're going to find more positive cases as well. So there, it's not to dismiss the fact that we have community spread also. So it's not just about the testing, but that is in essence why some of those numbers are increasing. In the number of deaths in Minnesota, 1922, and those no longer needing isolation, 78,238. So a number of the people are getting out of isolation. We call it no longer needing isolation because people aren't sometimes totally recovered. We have people that still have effects after they're done with their isolation. They still experience some effects. And we've heard cases where they have some ongoing symptoms after they've had COVID. The positive cases in Clay County are 1,142. Our deaths remain at 40. One currently hospitalized that we can find in Clay County, so we actually have that number.
Thank you for having that number. We were really made to call that, and it's tricky to find it. I think it's important for us to have that.
It's been a struggle to try to get those numbers from the hospital. So yeah, we're working on that all the time with our Red River Valley Task Force. And our 14-day case rate per 10,000 people, and that is the rate that the schools use to determine their level of distance learning or in-person learning. And so that number is 1576, and it increased significantly since the last, the last 10,000, or the last 14-day case rate. And that rate is August 16th through August 29th. Now, as you may have heard, we do have a number of cases that hit Dilworth-Glynn and Felton schools. That wasn't, the spread was not in classroom, but more about some group gatherings outside of that. So we worked, we had some of the team working with the superintendent and school board on Sunday to determine what they needed to do to change. They want to slow the spread, of course, and they have a number of more of the 7th through 12th grade. So they wanted to make some changes now and catch that before they have more numbers. Their numbers were high enough, so changing that learning model. We also have some numbers in the higher ed that we're following as well. So we're watching that closely. There's also someone assigned from Minnesota Department of Health that is also working with higher ed. So we have a liaison with K-12, along with us, Public Health. And then we also have a MDH, Minnesota Department of Health liaison with the higher ed. So we're all working together on their processes when they have some large numbers that are occurring on those campuses. Any questions with the K-12 or the higher ed? I also have the numbers of active cases, as you can see on this sheet, the grid that we kind of track. And we've changed the date a little bit to try and coincide with MDH getting more of those cases on the system that we use. And so we do have a larger number of active cases as of September 9th. So that's 196 active cases because the number of total confirmed cases increased as well. Now, as we state every week, we cannot get an accurate positivity rate for just Clay County. The positivity rate for Minnesota is, it went down. It was 5.4, and it's now 4.9 because they get all of the negative. So they find all the negative and the positive cases in Clay County. Unfortunately, we don't get all the negative tests from the North Dakota side. So we cannot give a real accurate positivity rate for just Clay County.
I have a question.
Yes.
So Clay County, we closed the courthouse a while back, and now it is appointment only. And if you look back on the data, which is partly why I encourage you to have this data, so we can look back and see trends. If we go with the active cases of 196 in the county, and our previous high was before September 2nd, was May 20th at 117. At what point do we pull back reins on maybe encouraging more remote work? Because I know more people have come back to the building. Maybe it's a question for Steve. I think it's important because the schools have a pretty set framework in terms of what thresholds will make them go hybrid or distance as opposed to in-person. And we don't have that. And so I think we need to have the discussion about when we pull back the reins or when we do more virtual meetings. I don't think we can see a peak and not be a little reactive to it.
That's a good question. And we do follow the Minnesota Department of Health guidelines. So they're aware of the numbers that we have in Clay County as they are in all counties. So at this point in time, they haven't, because we are doing remote. Now, we might want to look and see how many, we still have working remote and look at the numbers of employees. But they feel like we've done a really good job of doing appointments only, not opening up. Some of the other counties opened their doors, and so people could just come and go. And we have not done that at, you know, the Family Service Center and also at the courthouse. So at this point, we're just going to watch those numbers. They have increased, but it's nothing that we need to change at this moment. But certainly we'll have more conversation about that and things that we should be doing. Any other points on that?
Did you have something to add there, Steve?
Kathy, I would just, not to put you on the spot, Commissioner Mojo mentioned in May, we had 117 active cases. You indicated at the beginning of your presentation that there's now more testing that's going on currently than there probably was. Is there a way to determine that as far as the number of cases, number of testing that was done prior in May?
Yeah, and early on, like in March, April, May, it was a lot of the long-term care facilities and a lot of the congregate care facilities. Now, as we have schools, K-12, and colleges in session, you know, we're seeing numbers go up. But the testing across the state is, the positivity rate is really the robust testing that Minnesota's doing. Now, we anticipate that we'll have a bit more testing. We haven't confirmed that yet, but we're working with Minnesota Department of Health on having a targeted testing done in Clay County. So we're working on a possibility to have the Minnesota Department of Health come. It's called a strike team. They would come and maybe do some testing two to three days to see a bit more about having more targeted testing in Clay County. So we're working with them on that. We don't have any of the details. That may happen in the next couple of weeks.
Well, it seems like when, oh, excuse me. It may seem like you say when there's more testing, then we're finding out more people with, that tested positive, you know? So there's got to be a lot of people who aren't being tested that do have the COVID-19 that we don't, we're not even aware of yet, you know? So even though we got, you got figures here showing how many we've got, there's got to be, because if we do more testing, we find more. So there's got to be a lot more in Clay County, in Minnesota, in North Dakota. There's got to be a lot of people that have it that we're not even aware of.
There certainly may be people that have it that we aren't aware of, that don't get testing done. We also don't know, again, there's a lot of testing with negative results, and that is some of what we don't have. So we don't have a lot of the negative results. North Dakota Department Public Health Lab is not able to get those negative test results to us based on just the logistics of doing that. It's not an easy task for them. They don't have an electronic system that matches with ours, so. But yes, if we have more testing, we certainly may find more positive cases as well. But they'd like to do a targeted testing in Clay County just to kind of have a sense of what our county is really experiencing.
Well, that's why I think we just need to keep being cautious around there about...
Correct.
Wearing masks and stuff like that.
Oh, absolutely.
When you're out in the public, you know, it's just, we're just finding too many people with it, have it that we're not aware of, so.
But to go back to my point, if we're at an all-time high, and we know that, if you're saying we need to have more testing, then we'll know we'll have more cases. What I'm trying to say is, at what point do we have a threshold that pulls back the reins at the courthouse to reduce exposures?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Mojo, our pick committee has kind of led the way in some of the decisions that we've made as a campus. And maybe it's time with Kathy and her department's leadership, we could get together again and talk about establishing a protocol.
Yeah, just to follow up on that, it seems to me, you know, we have, right now, we have 100 and whatever it is, active cases. And where they are, we don't know. You know, we hear things about what goes on at, you know, the universities. I'm assuming, I'm probably guessing somewhat that that's a significant portion of the rise. And again, I'm saying I'm guessing. But going to what Commissioner Mojo said, at what point in time are, you know, from our campus standpoint and our employees? You know, at what point do we, if there's positive cases, to what level then do we do what Commissioner Mojo said? And possibly go back to working from home?
Yeah, and we certainly can talk about that. We can have more discussion about that. And like Steve mentioned, maybe we can talk with the pick committee again. We're not getting an immediate, again, it's because, as Cheryl mentions all the time, it's a gray area. So Minnesota Department of Health is just saying, you know, continue. As Commissioner Gross said, continue. We have to be diligent about wearing the mask, not continue our social distancing. So much of what's happening is out in the community. So many of the cases are out, even in the higher ed. It's not students in the classroom, but they're acquiring their cases in their social gatherings. And that's also what we experience in K-12. So it's a lot about the socialization that people are doing in large gatherings, not masking and in close proximity with people. Closer than six foot, longer than 15 minutes. So that's where we're seeing a lot of the community spread. So for the public, we want to emphasize that that's, we have to be diligent. I mean, people get tired of wearing masks, but that's our best method of protecting each other, as well as the social distancing, and not gathering in mass quantities of people. So that's where we're seeing a lot of the spread. So we'll certainly have more conversation about that.
Mr. Chair, I have one more question. Thank you. Do we have any employees that have tested positive throughout this ordeal?
Yes.
Okay. So that goes to my point. If we are at an all-time high cases that we've seen, we've already had employees test positive. It seems to be the responsible thing to do would be to reevaluate the amount of the public coming into this building.
And I'll say, yes, that's a good point. All of the cases that we know of so far have been acquired outside in social gatherings. It doesn't diminish the fact that we...
We have a quarantine process and all that here too, correct?
Oh, excuse me?
We have a, we have a process in place of quarantining.
Correct. Yep. And each employee that we've worked with, and we work with each one, they're following the guidelines exactly as they're supposed to.
Okay. Cheryl?
So on top of all of that, we are coming upon influenza season. You may have heard on the national news that there's many medical providers that have high concerns about this with the cases of COVID that are occupying hospital beds and ICU beds, then we have influenza. So according to the CDC surveys, only about half of Minnesotans get an influenza vaccine each year. And in order for us to reduce the impact of COVID on our healthcare systems, we need to increase that number of Minnesotans that get their flu shot this fall. So we have started getting our influenza vaccine here at Public Health. And we have been talking with some of the senior centers like we normally do each year about how we can get those folks vaccinated. We'll be offering it also to all of our county campus employees as well. And there will be more to come in the next couple of weeks. We'll be setting something up. It'll again be by appointment because we do not want to have people congregating. And we'll be able to send out the forms so our county employees can fill that out ahead of time with their insurance card information and everything. So there'll be more to come.
On these flu shots, I know some of them, they're already getting them now. Is there a certain time you should get, should you wait till October, November, so it lasts longer? How long do these flu shots last? Or don't we know?
Generally, your medical provider would be the best person for you to ask that question. We know that folks that are older, their immune system is not able to hold that vaccine immunity within their system as long as a 20-some-year-old.
Were you looking at me when you said older? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, with the 20-year-old.
I'm not quite to you, Mr. Chair.
He's German, he has got one heck of an immune system.
I'm German as well, so we're in there. There are many opportunities to get your flu vaccine through the medical providers, our healthcare systems. I have not seen it yet, but I'm sure Sancho and Sam will be announcing some type of opportunity there. And of course, many of the pharmacies are offering them, and then also we will be offering them as well.
But just to further clarify, they are, the medical providers are providing currently right now flu vaccine for those with health conditions, underlying health conditions. So it is, should be effective throughout our flu season. Typically, we start our flu shots in October, but they're starting them now because we have COVID vaccines that's going to be arriving. So we want everyone to get the influenza vaccine prior to getting a COVID vaccine. So now is not too soon to get your flu shot for anyone.
Well, there's no such thing as getting two flu, say like getting one in September or getting one in March?
No.
You don't do twice?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
There's no booster for the influenza vaccine, just the one time each year.
Okay.
That's too bad.
Yeah. Any other questions, comments?
Mr. Chair, if I could, one of the things that Kathy has mentioned in all of her updates is that they're working closely with higher education. And as the kids have come back to school, one of the problematic areas that have been identified is part of the college, college areas. And I just wanted to acknowledge the work that Public Health is doing. Specifically, if you read the paper this past week, Cheryl was singled out by one of our universities for the knowledge and the great work that she and her staff, and Kathy and her staff do. So I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair and Kathy, just a suggestion here to maybe to help kind of get the word out on flu shots. Maybe we should during one of, during our meeting coming up real soon, give them to all of us commissioners as a, you know, a public, I mean, at least those of us that want them.
Do we have shots?
I certainly do, yeah. Yeah, we can have a shot in the morning.
Commissioner Campbell, I used to come over and do those.
Yes, yeah, we did do that.
And we could certainly do that.
But I just, I just think from, you know, because we have this televised and it goes online, I think that to help with the public awareness, I think it would be good to do that.
It's a great suggestion.
I'd be more than willing to...
There's no that faints this there?
I'll have Kathy with us.
I'll grab you if you faint. Great suggestion, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Campbell, we can certainly arrange that.
Absolutely.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for the update.
All right, thank you.
Continue on with the CARES Act. We got County Minister Steve Larson and Darren, continue on with that.
Good morning, and I'm Mr. Chair, members of the commission. First of all, I just want to thank the board for their ongoing willingness to be flexible with the board agenda. The CARES Committee is continuing to work hard and with the time sensitivity of a lot of things, we don't always, aren't always able to meet that Thursday deadline. And so we appreciate, appreciate your flexibility. If I could, just again, just start, acknowledge a couple of different departments. Our Auditor's Office has, Lori and her staff have really continued to work hard, not only just with the regular hours and elections coming up, but they've been an important piece of our CARES Committee in making sure that all the allocations for our funds end up in the right spots and the payments go out. And so we want to thank them. I also would like to acknowledge Darren, his staff, and specifically Sharon Walls with time cards. Time cards are tricky at any, any time, but specifically, as was mentioned, when we have staff that have to make adjustments to time cards due to COVID or COVID-related issues, it almost could be a full-time job by itself. And so they've done a great job doing, keeping up with that and making sure that everything is done correctly. So the Coronavirus Relief Committee has continued to be, continued to meet on a regular basis. And this past week, we've met on three separate occasions. Again, a number of those issues are before you this morning on your agenda. And so continue to work with the time piece that we have to, 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 to save the dollars in the best way for our citizens, our county. I've continued to work and negotiate with, for possible sites for a lease for the motor vehicle. Our hope is that if all goes well by next Tuesday, we may have a recommendation before the board for consideration. And then just lastly, in my piece, I think each week, the committee provides an update of the spending. Darren provides us with graphs of what we've spent. And then based on the feedback or the decisions that are made by this board this week, what that projection would look like. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Darren.
Thank you. The thing, the first thing I handed out was our total number that came in as far as applications go for the CARES Act dollars for the small business. So under the corporation total, we had 400,000 limited liability companies, 240,000 501(c)(19), 40,000 (c)(501(c)(3), 150,000. Sole proprietorships, 151,000, for a grand total of 981,000. That equates to about 137 applications that came in for the CARES Act during the first round of...
The grants.
Grants, yeah. Couldn't think of that for a minute. And also, Mark Sloan, he's kind of my partner in all of this. And I don't know if you want to touch on our going forward with the second application. We're looking at a second round, and I think we'll get into that a little bit more on the next agenda item. But Mark has really been instrumental in helping out with the application and his team as well, Mandy Olson, and also representatives from Dilworth and Barnesville. And so that's what we have so far in round one that has been committed to the small business loans. So I don't know if you want me to...
Again, remind me, what was the total that we received for...
200 and, 2.25, 202,250,000 was the small business loan portion that we put into that category.
The grants, not loans.
The grants, yeah.
And how many applications did we receive?
137, I think it was.
I'm curious about how many nonprofit are reflected in the 40,000 and 150,000 here?
They're all nonprofit.
We had four that were 501(c)(19), and we had 15 that were 501(c)(3).
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions on that portion?
Yeah, we'll be talking about another round here coming up shortly.
Okay.
So you want me to hand these out now?
Please.
I think while Darren's doing that, I, when we started this, we put parameters on because we didn't really want, we didn't know how many applications we had. This has been a great partnership with Morehead with the first round. But seeing as there was dollars left over, we really did feel that it was important to continue to broaden that scope, to get the dollars out to folks that really needed most.
So, okay, yeah, you got two sets, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, there we go. So is this round one, correct?
That's with the changes that are made today.
That's right. Both these are.
Yes. So the first one that I handed out...
Both of these are, assuming that everything today is passed?
Correct. So the three things that I handed out, the first one is the chart, if everything is approved today, that's what the distribution of funds will be. The second one that I handed out is the, what's the, one that says CARES Act spending, that is the... that is the original plan. And then the second one that I handed out says projected if approved. Those are the projections if everything is approved today, when Rhonda and Kathy and all of the others come in, plus some redistribution of the funds. So that's the three items that I handed out for you today.
Maybe, maybe if I can just re-clarify part of what Darren's saying, Chair. So the CARES Act spending amount, that's, that's as, as of today, that had been approved before. And then you'll notice, and the projected if approved, you'll notice that some of these pods of money, the totals change. So for example, the business, small business one went from 2 million, 250 to the 1.7 million. And we'll get into explaining that in a little bit, but, and you'll notice that community resiliency went from 750,000 to 1.3. Part of that is going to be part of phase two, is going to, is going to be coming out of community resiliency rather than the business. So, but we can get into that. But yeah, I just, I just wanted to.
Anybody have any, any questions at all on anything that was handed out or anything that we haven't shared?
Well, I think we need to get into it a little bit to make, have it make sense. It makes sense to us because we see it.
Yeah, well, I just thought we could let them.
The, the two board agenda items are going to kind of merge here in a minute, once we explain the rationale behind some of it, so.
And so maybe, Mr. Chair, if there's no other questions, we can move into, move into agenda, agenda item number three.
Okay.
Or excuse me, number four. And then Mark, want to come forward? And what I would, what I would just say, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, very early on in the committee, committee discussions, the, the importance of providing business relief was identified as one of the main goals of our committee. And we've, we've shared some of those findings with you already this morning. And so what we have before you is a total dollar amount that we will be looking to, to have approved by this board as part of this program. With that, I'll turn it over to, to Darren and Mark.
So as part of this, as you know, we've been meeting by, twice a week for about two, two and a half hours each week as part of the CARES Act Committee. And so what you're seeing in front of you was phase one of the small business, and that's where a lot of our focus was. And so now that that is closed, we've had some meetings with Morehead already, and we have most of their numbers as well. And so the next phase of this will be starting to get that money out to those that have been approved. Like I said, we had 137 that were approved, and we had 13 that were, were not approved. I'm assuming at some point, we'll probably have a little bit more discussion with the committee on when these, these numbers and these locations and these dollar amounts will be posted, because I'm assuming that that would all be public information. But after that would be what we would do with the remaining dollars. And so the committee this week kind of talked about going into a phase two, a more targeted phase for discussing grants to long-term care facilities and those, and those type of facilities. Also looking at some of the elderly locations, and that's why some of the dollars that were moved that weren't used during the small business grant would be moved to the community resiliency piece. So the phase two portion of this would be a whole nother application process, and maybe I'll turn it over to Mark to kind of describe how we'll, we'll switch gears on that. And that's, of course, depending on if this board approves the transfer of that money from the small business to the community resiliency. As you probably remember, we have devoted some money to the community resiliency already, the 388,766, which came through Rhonda Porter's Social Services and Kathy McKay's Public Health. So Mark, you want to kind of describe some of the rest?
Sure. Before I get onto the phase two, I'm going to recap a little bit about phase one and where it's sitting. We, we did a three-week process where we collected applications from businesses all out, all in the county. We had a really good process for reviewing those applications and make sure that they were qualified. And special thanks to our partners in Barnesville, Dilworth, and Holly for helping us with that. Once the, those were all qualified and the application process closed earlier last week, we then, all those businesses that met the requirements, got an email from us saying that you are qualified for a grant. So that's where they sit right now, the applicants. They, they've heard back with an automated email that just says you, you're qualified. What we'll do now after today, hopefully this board will approve our paying these, grants out to these organizations, we will then send them, they'll get an email that basically gives them a couple steps that they have to complete. So they'll get an email specific to their business, and it'll say you have to fill out these forms. And once they get those forms back to us, then we'll be able to actually generate checks and it'll go out to the businesses. So for any of those business people watching, we're still trying to work hard here to get that money to them by the end of the month. That's what our target's been all along. So hopefully we'll see how close we can get, but that's, that's where we're sitting with those. So that process is moving along as we speak. So then, as Darren mentioned, we, when we got done with that, we found we had some funds available, so we looked at some other things we could do to support the, the community. The next thing is two different actual plans. One is another small business relief grant program, only this time we're going to target businesses 21 to 50 employees, that next tier up, some of the little bit larger restaurants, some of those types of things is what we're really targeting. And instead of, in the last grant program, Morehead had a program and Clay County had a program, and they were very similar, but they were running inside Morehead and outside Morehead. This new phase two, we're calling it, will be countywide, will include Morehead and all the rest of the county. So any business that has the, that size will be able to apply for that grant. The requirements will be very similar to what we had before. Actually, we're going to take a lot of our requirements we had in the last one and just tweak them for a little bit bigger businesses. And we will run another process and try to get some applicants and see how that goes. So that's where we're trying to go with that program, is to help those, you know, trying to get some money out that we can help, help some of those businesses. Meanwhile, we're going to, we're proposing a separate program, which is specifically targeting our elder care facilities. We know that they've had some severe dramatic impacts from this. So we, those facilities are licensed, and we have, we have a knowledge of who they are, where they are, and all that stuff. So that program will provide, we're looking at providing them some grant dollars, but we'll target them specifically. We'll reach out to each and every one of them and say, we'd like to invite you to apply. There'll be an online form, and they'll have to fill out because we have to, we have to have paperwork, so we know what we're doing. So they'll, we'll have an application form for that. So for, and for both those programs, if they're, if things keep moving like we hope they do, we're hoping early October is when we'll be opening those up for those organizations to start applying. So that'll run in, in October, and we'll try to get that, that piece out. So we just keep trying to do what we can to help.
I was attending a meeting yesterday with AMC, and, and one of the things they really stressed was documentation, you know, and.
I'm sure you're doing that.
Yes.
Requested that and stuff like that, but they felt, you know, if there's an audit or something like that, you really need to have your documentation available.
Yeah, and that's why these, for some of these folks, you know, that are applying, there's a lot of forms they seem like they have to fill out. Well, that's mostly, and then like when we did our review, we actually had a checklist form, which is a whole separate form that we use, so we can keep track of what, all the information about that business. So, yeah, we're trying to, yeah, we're doing everything we can to keep track of this information.
One, one thing that we're working through is the city of Morehead, and in our discussions, we've talked about having an affidavit that folks will need to sign in order to receive the funds and, and have identified that that should be notarized. And so Morehead is working with the drive-throughs of the, the banks, and so they will allow drive-through notary signatures to reduce contacts. So that's, that's a conversation that we're continuing to have. We're in weekly meetings with Office of Management and Budget. Lori's very aware of the tracking and documentation, and so we're, we're really trying to do as much of that as possible.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, if I can maybe do a little bit more explaining on this phase two as well. Obviously, when we, our first go-around, we really felt the need to target the small, small businesses. And unfortunately, as with, with that criteria, it actually kicked out most of these long-term care facilities because of their number of employees, because they're open 24/7. So, so, so they, most of them wouldn't have even qualified to be able to apply under phase one. And furthermore, you know, they're, throughout the country, I think they're probably the, some of the heaviest-hit businesses that we have. And so maybe to kind of explain a little bit where we're shifting this money, if I can, now this is appropriate time. If you, if you look at the original small business amount of 2,250,000, and then if you look at the proposed one where the small business goes to 1.7 million, that difference is 550,000. And that number, we're transferring to community resiliency, of which that's the area where we want to use those funds for those long-term care facilities. So, and we know how many there are, so we're, we're actually looking at numbers that could be up to 25,000 in grant opportunities for those facilities. They're, because they were that significantly hit. So, so then if you look at the remaining 1.7 million that's in the business, you, you see that we spent about 981, which means there's still about 770, I think.
719.
7, excuse, 719, yes. 719,000, that's still available for round two for these 20 to 50. And so, but what our promise is going to be is, 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 you know, we're still looking at the potential for up to 10,000 on those again as well. But it's, because this time, we're including all businesses, whether inside or outside Morehead. So we don't know what that number's going to be, but, but we do know that, that we have, that 719,000 to work with in terms of what's available. You know, and if you have, if you have 70-some applications, you know, there, you're, you're close to being able to award those full amounts. But I think the whole, the intent there is, is in the community resiliency, transferring the money to community, community resiliency. And, and I think, what was our number, 22?
20, we had 22, of which.
15 are in Morehead.
15 are in Morehead.
So, so, so of those 22 facilities, that's where we came up with, at 25 grand each, it's 550,000. So, and those, those were just saying, they'll qualify for that. And so, so I think the actions that we want today were, first off, to allow payment for phase one. And then secondly, to transfer 550,000 from the small business pod to the community resiliency pod, to be used for.
For the long-term care.
Long-term care. I think those, hopefully I.
Exactly. Those would be the two motions.
Mr. Chair, I think if, if we could just follow up with Commissioner Campbell, if we could, if we could have a vote on each individual agenda item, I think that would be the way I prefer to move forward. So if we, if, if there's no further discussion, if we would want to start with the allocation of, of funding in number four.
Are you talking about agenda addition, or are you?
No, we're talking about, we're talking about the, on the CARE Small Business Relief Grant Request.
Okay.
The, the motion that requested is that the board, the board approve allotted CARES funds for business agencies that successfully met the requirements of the CARE Small Business COVID-19 grant, a relief grant.
Which, which side is that on here?
That would be the 981,000.
That was part of your original, original.
Oh.
Attachment B, big one.
Yep. I'd move attachment B.
Okay, we got a motion by Kevin, second by Jenny, to approve the Small Business Relief Grant Request. Is that the motion that you need to get down?
Yep.
I think we should also preface it by saying that this will come out of the column, the CARES Act.
Small business.
Small business.
Yeah, this is a Small Business Relief Grant.
And that's the number, if you want to put a number to it, that's the 981,000.
Okay. Any further discussion of that?
Just to clarify, our agenda sheet says a million.
Mr. Chair, Members of the Commission, Commissioner Mojo, we, at the time, our, our committee at the time of, on Thursday, our, our committee was still reviewing the final applications.
Perfect, thank you.
But the number is 981,000.
Okay, we're looking at 981,000 though on this request, right? Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Okay. Now we're going to move on to the, are we doing the first edition or the second? Because the first agenda item, or addition, looks like the same thing again, isn't it?
This would be a phase two. This would be establishing a phase two.
Okay, phase two for Small Business Administration. I'm not mixed up at all. Go ahead.
It was a little confusing when we were doing this, but it would be for the phase two for the businesses that are from 21 to 50, and then the long-term.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So this phase two would allow companies with 21 to 50 employees to apply for funding of up to $10,000. We've estimated that cost impact to be around 720,000?
That's what we have.
It'll be countywide.
This is addition one that we're looking at right now, right?
Yes.
I am lost with these papers here.
In the staple on the agenda additions?
Yep.
Addition one.
That's the one.
There we go. Okay.
Well, I'm excited about this. I, our hope is that it will be swift in order to collaborate and get it posted, and we've, we've talked about it being a quick seven days, have a media blast, and try to connect with as many folks in collaboration with the smaller cities in. I'll make a motion to approve utilization of CARES funds to implement a second phase of a business relief program from 21 to 50, full-time employee equivalent, up to 10,000.
Second.
Here we got a motion by Jenny, second by Kevin, and I hope everybody's on the same page on this one. Okay? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, so we got phase two, or phase one, approved. Now we'll go into.
Addition two.
The business, business relief category, the resiliency category, in order to establish long-term care and assisted living grant program for licensed agency.
Correct.
Correct.
Oh, I did that right. Okay. Good.
Mr. Chair, I, I would move that we reallocate 550,000 from the small business category to the community resiliency category, and that these, this 550,000 be used for grants for long-term care and assisted living facilities that have been drastically, drastically affected by COVID-19 pandemic.
Here we got a motion by Kevin.
And that would be up to 25,000 per.
Second. Got a motion by Kevin, second by Grant. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion CARES. Now we're going to go to Public Health Outreach and Service Funding Request for the remodel. Kathy, you going to take that one? Okay, we got Kathy and Joe.
Okay, we got Kathy and Joe.
This is a request that went through the CARES Committee as well. And I have an agenda item, and then I also handed out the drawing, so you can better visualize what we're talking about with, in the WIC area. But we are looking at just a physical barrier, a wall to separate, once WIC clients actually come back, they are currently not served in our, in our WIC program physically, but once they come back, we needed a separation so families would not be congregating together in the hallways. It also separates the labs from the office space to a lab, and the lab areas where WIC's clients have their heights, weights, a hemoglobin blood draw, and a lead test. So we don't want the families to be interacting and being in close proximity. It's pretty tight quarters there. So our request was to actually, and Joe can describe it better, to separate the hallway there where clients can come in one area, and one WIC person would serve them, and then there's another, they wouldn't have to intermingle in the hallway there. So they'd have an ability to get some families through without interacting.
Yeah, basically, just a basic wall, and we have to build out a little bit that's within that one exam room there, whatever, recall that room.
Yeah.
And so, basic wall, pretty simple project.
And then a doorway, I think we were changing a little bit to align with that?
Yep, yeah, there's a little construction on that doorway, kind of where that red elbows, that's, there's a little we've got to do there.
And they put an estimate as 2,000 to 3,000, but it may be up to 5,000, do we think, Joe?
Yeah, I mean, we got to go, we might have to go up to the deck, up to the top, above there, the ceiling, so not exceed 5,000, but I'm still getting that price, but I know it's not going to be more than that, so.
Okay. Any further, any questions for Joe or Kathy on that? Any motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve to utilize CARES Act funding for the public health WIC programming project.
Second. Okay, a motion by Jim, second by Grant, to approve the CARES Act funding to build this wall in the WIC area. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay. Motion passes. Can we get that done by this afternoon?
All right. That'll be the first one done.
You have the next one?
Oh, for Foltz.
Okay.
For Foltz.
Foltz Building, okay.
Okay, the next thing is the insulated storage building for public health. Want to give us a little bit of lowdown on that one?
Yeah, so we put a, I guess when we originally, I think Abe had come to the board a few weeks back on, with the original quote from Foltz, and I looked into the final price on everything, what it would cost. And we put together, and then we had a request for a fully insulated building, see what that costs, and I brought that to the committee last Friday. So today, we're requesting to move forward with a fully insulated building. And as you can see, I've gotten four different quotes for different contractors to make this thing happen. So the Foltz Building quote came in at 61212, Key Contracting, that's the concrete, and that's a, we have to put in kind of a floating slab-type scenario to get this in before the weather hits. And so we had to change up how we do it, but that's the cost of the slab. And then Rix Electric came in at 13950, that's running power from the main building over to there, and wiring up the whole building. And then Houston Engineering, I needed some design plans to submit for building codes for the city. So we have total project cost right now to have an insulated building over there with power at 88,182.
Okay, is this going to include heating and stuff like that?
Yeah, so there's a couple different, I guess from Friday, that has developed is, I'm waiting on some pricing for some data to go in there. I got that request, because this building is maybe going to change to where you guys may work out of it a little bit here and there, Kathy, or?
Right, depending on how we serve the clients with our COVID vaccine, et cetera, may be useful for that.
And another thing, I was wondering, too, when you're talking about the concrete work doing this on the area, are you putting a drain in there at all, or?
Well, no, that was a good question. That's another one of the, now that we've talked about that changing, I'm looking into what it would cost to add a drain in there. This initial cost, no. And for CARES Act Committee, I didn't bring that in as a number. Right now, Houston Engineering's working on the site plan, and that should be done Wednesday. And so I asked to see what this would take to get drainage. They have, there's an inlet on 15th Avenue that we have to tap into, and so I don't know that price, because I have to have them come back now and tell me that. So I guess, yes, that is one thing I had overlooked, is the drainage and the water. If that's a building, we're going to have that in. So I think with heating and stuff, definitely drain, having a drain in there is a good deal.
Well, if you're going to heat it, yes.
Yes, yes. So I, I have to wait until this Wednesday, until that comes back, to tell me where I would tap into this service line. And then I was hoping maybe I could bring that to the committee with the extra numbers on that as well, too, so.
So these numbers, 88,000 probably is not going to cover the.
Yeah, it's probably, yeah, we probably have a little bit of extra cost that I'm waiting on to come back for that. But this is to get the building up, ordered, insulated, and.
We're buddying up on time, so it's, that's part of what's going on, is if we could approve the pieces that we know need to be done right now, we could get the approval to go forward with that piece, and then maybe after we get the concrete filled, then you can come back with the addition request.
Yeah.
But I think part of the reason this has evolved into a little bit of a different building than when it was first discussed is, there are some sensitive medical equipment that will be in that, and to have a cold storage is just not responsible or feasible. And for the, you know, in my, in looking at it, you know, it's, the insulation is more, but it's minimal in comparison to what frozen.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just looking, if you're going to do concrete work, you're going to put a drain in.
Yep.
So now's the time to do it.
Yep, exactly. Yeah, no, I was glad you brought up a good thing, and I'm definitely looking into that. When are you, when is the next CARES meeting?
Uh, tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, okay.
We'll see you there.
There and ready. So I'll have something, I'll work, but I'm going to, I'll have something as quick as I can there. We, if this is approved today, concrete work wouldn't happen next week, probably the following week, so we definitely have some time to, and we have, I'm waiting, we have to get this all submitted to building codes and signed off due on, so. But I can order the building today if this happens, and that's our, the building and the concrete are my two.
Okay.
To get this building up, but yes, I will, I will bring that back. It's definitely a good thing you brought that up, so.
Mr. Chair, when we last presented this, you know, I think the motion that we asked for was spending up to 70,000 on this, and what's changed in that point in time, originally, that did not include insulation, and we were thinking that we might only insulate a portion of it, where it might be the refrigerated area or whatever. But in looking at long-term, it just makes sense to do the whole, the whole thing. And in addition, I think since then, we've also added a garage, another garage door to the northeast side, so you could actually have a complete drive-through in there. And at that time, we did not anticipate the $1,500 in engineering fees that the city actually now requires for a project like this, to go through that process. So that's, that's kind of what's bumping that thing up to the 88,000. And so I would, I would move that we authorize these numbers, and then we'll come back to you with the potential addition for the Florida. Of course, we, yeah, we'd have time, wouldn't we?
Oh, yeah, that part, we have time, and I'll, I'll get that, I'll get all that information this week.
I would move that we go forward with these quotes.
Okay, we've got a motion to go forward with the projected project cost, which probably will increase with the, with the drainage.
Second.
We've got a motion by Kevin, second by Grant.
And just to, and just to clarify, my motion would be that these would come out of CARES, CARES Act dollars.
Yes. It will come out of CARES Act, yes. Any further discussion, or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Georgia, as long as you're here. Next thing, it's going to be purchase a drop box for outside the family service center.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We currently have a drop box in the vestibule area at the family service center. It's a very small box, and now that most people are going to appointment-only and drop-off paperwork, we're looking to purchase a, more of a freestanding mailbox, that would be similar to a actual postal box. It will be gray in color, so hopefully they don't get confused and leave their mail in there. And then this box would be used by all of the tenants of the family service center, where currently the box is only used by social services. We're looking to, it's going to be approximately $1,200 by the time we add the tax and shipping. There is a site online, we may be able to get it a little bit cheaper, but depending on the day the price seems to fluctuate, so we're looking at 12, approximately $1,200 for a maximum.
May I all make a motion to approve?
Second. We've got a motion by Jenny, second by Jim, for purchasing a drop box for outside use. Any discussion? I guess my question would be, is this drop box going to look different than a mail drop box? We're going to identify, it has to be identified.
It'll be, it'll be signed, it'll be different in color, it'll be a gray color, it'll be a little bit closer to the building, and we will have a sign on there that indicates it's for tenant use only. We're hoping we don't get public mail in there. If we do, it will be checked by our family service and our mailroom staff, and we could just take that mail and put it into our outgoing mail if that should occur, but we're hoping it, it's only going to be for tenant drop off.
I would hope that, too. Okay. I guess that's why I'm concerned about that people aren't going to be using that for a mail drop box.
Right.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, Lori, you are here. Okay. Next thing, we got a Accounts Payable Management, Lori Johnson's going to. Covering that.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What I'm proposing to purchase out of the CARES Act money, it's an electronic accounts payable program. It's similar to what Rhonda proposed for, for their funds. And it's actually, it allows us to accept emails with PDFs, and we can actually import the data directly from that. Or we can scan it, it can be a scanned document we pull in, and it'll, it'll pull the information in. And we can also key things in, we can send them back and forth for approval. So if it comes in and it doesn't have an approval, we can email it out, and they can send it back. And then it actually will interface with our current financial software and import everything in, so we don't have to duplicate any data entry or anything like that. So it's something, you know, we would have been looking at in the future, but it's something we actually need right now to utilize with working from home, because we do have a number of our accounts payable people working at home, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Part of the discussion that we had at the CARES Committee is that COVID has really brought this, the need for this to the forefront, the ability to accept documents virtually, to reduce the hand-to-hand spread, and to have the efficiency of employees that are remote working. It really is going to streamline a lot of the process for this department, so it's very, very needed.
Appreciate that.
I think that is the motion.
So move.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by Jenny, second by Grant. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next thing we got going is CARES Infrastructure Fund Request for three remodeling projects at the family service center. Rhonda?
Good morning.
Ah, Joe's back again. Going to cost us money.
Yeah. Okay. I am hoping you got in your package the three diagrams.
Yes, we do.
Okay. So all of those areas are, areas in the family service center where social service staff are. And so maybe I will start with the largest proposal, that is, the document that looks like this. Yours is probably colored, but it's our income maintenance area, so it's the larger diagram. Okay?
About it.
All right, so this is located on first floor. It is our northeast corner, do I have that right, Joe?
Yeah.
Northeast corner. This is where all of our eligibility workers are, and this is where we, they deliver all of the economic assistance programs, the healthcare, food support, cash grant programs. And so, right now, just to give you the flow, if you look at the bottom of the document, you'll see right where it says Lobby 1002, there's a little opening there. That's where our customers come in, and they go, there's a waiting area there, and then we have a reception area, and there's two windows facing that area. So customers come in there, they wait in the waiting area, and then they go down that left corridor where it says client walkway. And right where it says 1146, that door going into the suite is a security door. So the issue we're having is that security door, when clients come in and they go into one of the five interview rooms, they have access to the whole suite, including the lunch area, all of the offices for the staff, the OSS space, they can come around into the reception area. So we have no kind of assistance in terms of our flow of traffic in this unit. And on any given day, I had them, they generally track the flow of traffic in this unit, and in January of 2020, kind of pre-COVID, they had about 75 appointments and 20 walk-ins on average per day. So it's quite a bit of traffic in this unit. Now, I think that that volume hopefully will change a bit after COVID. We're trying to do our work a little bit differently, but nevertheless, it's a very busy unit. So overall, what we're trying to do is add two security doors. So kind of in the middle of the grid, you'll see a yellow line, if you have a colored copy, it says install a card reader security door. So we want to install a door there. And then on the right-hand side, another yellow line where, kind of where it says corridor 1199, a security door there. And what that'll do is essentially allow all of the staff to be behind the security doors. Now, how that's related to COVID is, you know, again, we have families and individuals, large and small, come, come into these areas. And some, some of these interviews are lengthy, and so we have people that can meander around, we have kids that can meander around, we have families kind of having to corral their kids within interview rooms as we're trying to accomplish the work. In addition to that, I think that we're seeing a community and some of our citizens much more stressed. And when they come in and apply for benefits, if some of those are not approved based on eligibility guidelines, I think we're seeing some more heightened frustrations and increased tension on the part of some of our clients that we might anticipate. We've seen it pre-COVID, and I think it's going to be even more challenging after COVID. So we think this is important, and we think it fits, and we did review this with the CARES Committee, and they had approved up to $45,000 for this project. In addition to those two doors, we're going to seal off a couple other doors, create another door, again, to create that security and flow for our citizens. So any questions on that one?
One question that I, Mr. Chair, that I didn't ask in the CARES meeting, so these security doors, so to get in, as you, to get in, they'd have a card swipe. How about to get out?
They can push their way out, their requirement.
I, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah.
It wasn't a card reader on both sides.
Yeah, yeah, we're not creating it per.
Per COVID, has that.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure that there's...
Yep.
I mean, if there got to be a situation where there was an alarm and they had to get out, I don't want to have somebody, have them go look for their card key.
Yeah.
Right. So that is our financial services. If there's no questions, I don't know if you feel the need to act on each one or if I should just keep going?
I think we should act on each one.
Okay.
Okay, any further questions on that, installing these doors on the first floor? No, I'm looking for a motion. So moved. Got a motion by Grant.
Second.
And a second by Jim to install security doors on the first floor of the family service center. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay.
All right, thank you. The second one looks like this. It is for our child support division. If you could find, find that one. Mine is gray, but yours would be, your box at the bottom would be colored, yep. So this is in our child support fraud and collections unit. This is also on the first floor. It's kind of located mid, mid-building there. This is where all of our child support officers, collections and fraud unit have their offices. And what we're proposing is, you'll see where I have it labeled, client entrance. So it says waiting area. So right now, when you come in from the corridor, there's just a waiting area there. And right now, we're really not, we hadn't been using that because our child support folks will check in in our income maintenance unit. And we'll continue that process. But what happens is oftentimes, the staff will then bring the client back and they'll either have a face-to-face in their office or they will try to use one of the interview rooms in the income maintenance unit. But this will allow us to divide that waiting room in half with a wall and then a plexiglass top so that the staff, when they do need to meet face-to-face, do paternity testing, signing forms, that kind of thing. They, the client could come in from the corridor. The staff could come in from the existing already card reader door. They could conduct the business and be done. This would require us to kind of build that half wall with a desk space. And then it will require us to close up an old, existing reception window. We think, again, this relates to COVID, that it allows us to not bring clients back into their small meeting room spaces. It allows them to do quick business right there. It allows, again, this is child support fraud and collections, which, again, with difficult times, we're seeing, we anticipate seeing folks that are stressed and frustrated perhaps with some of our systems. And this will create that security as well. So we'd like to propose that. One of the things in talking with Joe, the cost estimate was a bit more around $7,000. So we'd like that to be adjusted a bit to maybe up to $7,000 for this project.
Yeah, the cost on that, when you build a wall and you put the security glass in and the speak-through speaker, all adds up too. So when you put the glass in, it's tough to hear. So we find it, we have to put a, some sort of speaker through, so.
Looks to me like you're going to be one busy person, Joe. Okay, any further questions on this project? You have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Grant.
Second.
Second by Kevin to install some barriers with a cost estimate around $7,000. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay. And you got more?
Thank you, yes. The third proposal, last one with the two pictures at the bottom. This is on fifth floor of the family service center. So the whole fifth floor is occupied by social services. This is the south wing. So the first picture there is showing on the left is where when individuals come up, they check in at that counter there. And then we have three security doors in this lobby. The first one you see there in the picture goes down the south wing. We have one to the west and one to the north. When you open that door going into the south wing, you'll see those other two doors that I highlighted there. That is where we do our supervised visits for children that are in foster care, where the safety risks are too high that we require the visits to be supervised. So we do them in those two rooms. It's actually one room, but we can divide it with a partition. So sometimes we have two visits going on at one time or one larger visit. The concern that we've been having in this area is that children, well, first of all, in order to use the restroom, the family has to come out of the visitation room, go through the security door, go to the restroom, back into the security door and back into the rooms. What happens is the kiddos, they run out. They run into our reception area, which you can't really see from this picture, but it's just straight ahead from those doors. And our receptionists are often kind of intervening a bit on corralling them to where they need to go, or they stop in there and want some candy, which our reception staff have been great to have. But it's creating, and some of the children will kind of run out and run down the south corridor. And some of our parents are going after them. And we have our staff back there and other clients perhaps. So we'd like to add, initially, we were thinking of taking that door and just moving it back so that the two visitation rooms would be out in the lobby area and outside of the secure. But we've talked about actually leaving that existing door, propping it open if we want, and then adding a security door further back. So the visits would not have access to the secure area anymore. And it would mitigate some of those issues we've been having. So that cost estimate was up to $10,000.
We've really vetted this out at the CARES committee. We've talked about all the different angles on it, how to reduce the most exposure, what makes sense in the long run. And so I appreciate this proposal. I think it makes sense and it's also, you know, financially conservative like that. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion by Jenny, second by Grant to approve the additions, security area on the fifth floor, up to $10,000, or estimate around $10,000. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Probably the next thing is a request from Joe to hire two carpenters?
We got them lined up. We'll hope to start next Monday on all this.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I do a little housekeeping?
Go for it.
So the, the three items that we just acted on for social services, Rhonda's items, and the item from Georgia, all of those, we are, want to come out of the county infrastructure pot of money from COVID CARES. And the, I don't know if we, if I can't remember if I stated in the, in the resolution on the building, but that comes out of, the recommendation is for that to come out of the public health budget. So for CARES dollars. But I just, just so that we keep these things, the record straight on these things down the road. I don't know if we said which pot of money they're coming under, so just...
We're depending on you to keep track of it.
Well, that's why I spoke up.
No, thank you for all of it. Boy, the CARES committee has been busy.
See you then.
And Mr. Chair, I have one last thing. And I don't, I don't think this was on the agenda for today, but we talked about it during our CARES meeting. Were you planning on bringing up the county fair deal or are we going to do that?
We are in the future, Courtney.
Okay, all right.
Okay, you got more stuff?
Thank you, no, we are done. Thank you.
Oh, it looked like you were ready for another one.
Thank you.
Next week.
And now Kevin with the watershed on request for resolution 20, 20-27 with the one watershed, one plan. Kevin Kason-Brick from Southern Water Conservation District.
Over the last two and a half years, probably, it's been that we got together with the Buffalo Red Watershed District staff and managers down there, members of the SWCDs from Wilkin, Clay, Becker, and Otter Tail Counties, as well as county commissioners on policy committee issues and coming up with a planning advisory and policy committees to basically put together a comprehensive water management plan for the Buffalo Red watershed area. And we're at the stage now where a formal approval is, is being passed of those entities, the, those that are members of the memorandum of agreement, which is Clay County, the Clay SWCD and the Buffalo Red River Watershed District. And I know the policy committee met on August 26th. They passed a, basically approved the draft of the plan. And that's where I'm at right now. Tomorrow, there is a, a public hearing to go over comments that any individuals out in the, in the public would be interested in. There is a meeting at the Buffalo Red River Watershed District at 5:00, as well as a virtual meeting. So if you're interested in attending, listening in, there is a link to go to that I could send to you. It's been sent out by Houston Engineering Consultant Rachel Ohm. But right now, I guess we're looking at the approval process and it basically is asking for a resolution to be signed by the county board. I took it to our Clay SWCD board of supervisors last Thursday and they approved it. So we're at that stage. So we're winding things down, guys. So it's, it's a good feeling. And I know, I know Commissioner Mojo and Commissioner Gross have been part of that policy committee. And we've got another one with the wild rice that we're working on presently also. That one will be the same process we'll be going through here shortly. But that one is a little bit further behind the Buffalo Red. So things are kind of coming down to where we are going to have a full-blown one watershed, one plan in place. It's what the state is after in the, in the watershed areas.
Okay, as Kevin explained there, we are, the policy board has approved this and there will be a public hearing tomorrow night at 5:00, correct? At the Barnesville.
Right, yeah.
Kevin, can you clarify for me? Last night I tried to attend their, their main meeting and I had difficulty accessing the virtual line for some reason. I never got approved to get in. Is it in-person and virtual?
Yes. I do have a copy of what was sent out, I guess it was August 26th. But it was something that was sent out as basically a link to Microsoft Teams meeting, which I think what you guys do on, on this meeting. I think this is handled that way. So if you'd like, I could send this to you. I've not tried to access it, but...
That would be great. Because last night was a conference call line, so that's different. That will probably work.
Okay.
And just, I want the public to be able to participate.
I hope so too, yeah. Like I say, I think that's their opportunity to comment on this, this whole process.
I think that's what a public hearing is about.
Yeah, exactly.
That may be something that we want to put on our county social media pages.
Do you want a copy of this, Steve?
Great, thank you.
And I can send it to you electronically, if you'd like, as well as you, if you want me, I can send that to you all too, so you can attend if, if you wish, so.
Okay, any further questions for Kevin?
Just a comment of thanks. I know that you and your staff have put a significant amount of time into going to meetings and providing input, oftentimes twice as many meetings as the commissioners are invited to. So thank you for your input and creating this.
You're very welcome.
Yes, and I also approve. You know, thank you for that, for taking the hold of this and keeping moving it. We're getting close to the end here.
I'm happy. It does get to be a long, drawn-out process. A lot of, a lot of agency input, a lot of county input. Like I say, it's a big process and covers a lot of, large territory.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2020-27.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion by Jenny, second by Jim to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Kirk, we're going to approve a landfill construction change order number one.
Mr. Chair?
That scares me, change orders, yes.
Yeah, this scare me too, but this is a good one, so it's not so bad. As you know, we are in the process right now of constructing a new cell out at the landfill and also closing a portion of the landfill cell as well. During the process of closing the landfill cell, we've decided we want to try and take care of a chronic stormwater problem. Essentially, what's going on is the water's flowing off the hill and pooling in the bottom of an area that's an existing hall road, a hall road. So what we want to do with this, this change order is to construct a new hall road, close an additional one and a half acres of landfill, and slope the, the area a little bit better so we have better flow. So that's the, the purpose of this, this change order.
Any questions for Kirk?
I'll move to approve their request.
Second. Got a motion by Grant, second by Jim to approve the request to relocate the hall road. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next item on is the supportive benefit changes, insurance renewals, and cafeteria plan for 2021. We've got Darren and benefits coordinator Anna Moore. We haven't seen Anna around much, but now's the chance to get acquainted with her.
Good morning. Darren and I are here this morning to provide an update on the 2021 cafeteria plan, the renewal, and then to seek support of the insurance committee for the proposed changes. So you guys should have received a few documents in your packet from Colleen. The first one would be the, it looks like this. It's the renewal projection. As you may know, we received a 14% insurance increase for 2021. On this chart here, on this piece of paper, you'll see the current rates for 2020 in comparison to 2021. With the 14% annual adjustment, there would be an increase of $636,000 for 2021. In addition to that, with the increased premiums, we, based off the calculation that was approved on 8/13 of 2019, the county contribution would also increase. I have also provided a rate chart. It should be in green and yellow as a separate sheet. This is another breakdown of all four plans, the comparison, and then the calculation that we use to calculate the 2021 county cafeteria contribution. So you'll see that there was an average of $245 for an increase for the family plans and a $92 increase for the single plans. So the way that calculation that was approved on 2019, or in 2019, the family county contribution would increase by $123 and the single county contribution would increase by $46. Do you guys have any questions about that?
I got one question on that, as far as the increase.
Yes.
You're looking at, what is it, a $46 increase because of the insurance? But I see the dental went down. Is that taken into consideration?
So the contribution, the calculation that was approved in, on August 13th of 2019, it's based off the health insurance premium. It didn't take into effect the dental.
I mean, we keep an increase because now, because of insurance rate increases, which we've been doing, but that's the only thing. I mean, why aren't we taking dental into consideration? Because if you take out insurance, you get dental and life insurance.
Right, if you remember, probably about a month ago, the committee voted to change our dental over to Blue Cross, or Delta Dental. Right now, we have Blue Cross Blue Shield Minnesota. And through doing that process, our premiums for our dental went down. So when we went to Delta Dental, those are the savings that you're seeing there for those. So technically, you could say, yes, if you have a family or, or family or single plan, you're going to be paying less in dental, but you are going to be paying a little bit more because of the increase in the premium of the health, health insurance. So I guess it's all the way you look at it is where you, where you're saving money and where you're not. But we've always used the health... But we've always used the health premiums as the basis of the calculation.
I agree with that, I mean, we have been using that, you know, but if you take out insurance, you get the health insurance, you get the dental insurance, you get the life insurance. It's really one package, plus anything else you want to take. But when we figure increases in the cafeteria plan, we only take the health insurance into consideration.
Correct.
Is that the right way to, should we be looking at changing that, or?
Well, I think this year may be an outlier, because how often does the insurance for that piece actually go down? I don't recall ever sitting on this board and seeing any of it go down.
Right.
And so I think to keep an even track, you can't be as reactive, you have to be consistent in in how it goes, because if we were to quick jump it way back down, we may see a larger increase next year, when we know those will steadily climb.
The nice thing about the dental is it is a three-year quote contract, so those will remain the same for the next three years, so there will be a savings there. Just as a, as a quick review, as you remember, last year, we did a big market study, and then we also changed our county contributions. And so as in before, we always had one county contribution for everybody. Well, this year, we started with the different county contribution calculations where the grandfathered people that were here before, 1-1-2020, would get a single county contribution. We upped the family county contribution by $200 for everybody that had a family plan. And then anybody hired after January 1st of 2020 would get a reduced county contribution. And so that is just kicking in this year, and and that's what we're seeing as far as the county contributions go. So this will be the second year that we see those three levels of county contribution.
I'm just trying to get my thinking around that cafeteria plan, you know? Like the new employees that just get whatever they take, I mean, they don't get the whole cafeteria plan to get.
So they, for those that were hired after 1-1 of 20, they're still given that allotted amount each month, they just don't receive a cash back. So if they're not using their entire contribution, it's either going into a VIBA or an HSA. So they're all, every employee hired after 1-1 of 2020 is using that full amount, just going towards, towards all of their benefits.
Instead of cash.
Correct.
Okay, so if I come on as a new employee, 1-1-20, and this is going to cost me $700, whatever, come up with a figure. The rates go down, do they still get the $700, or is the, do they get less?
Well, you mean the health insurance rates go down?
The health insurance rates go down, do they still get the $700 that they were hired at?
So if they, if the insurance rates were to go down, let's say, then we'd have to review that at that time. There hasn't been a time since, we've looked back at the last 10 years, and it's always increased, so there hasn't been a time that we've found that the health insurance premiums have decreased.
Well, I realize that too, but this time I see the dental decrease, so that's why I'm just wondering about it.
Yeah, I mean, we can review the calculation that we use for the county contribution, but the way it was written last year is that you just take into effect the increase for the health premium.
Actually, and it was changed last year, because if you recall, many years ago, well, not many, several years ago, we always took the increase to the highest, highest plan, and now we use the average of the family plan. So there is some reduction there as well. So the average, the average increase rather than the increase to the highest premium plan.
And then one thing to note with the increased premiums for 2021 is that this year, those employees that were hired after 1-1 of 2020, based off the county contribution, they could receive the CMM 1000 plan, the dental and the basic life insurance, and the county contribution covered that. So they didn't have to pay anything out of pocket, but because of the pay, or because of the premium increase for 2021, they'll no longer be eligible for the CMM 1000 at 100%. So it kind of bumped them to that next tier, where if they're looking for their entire premium to be, monthly premium to be covered, they have to move up to at least a VIBA 2600. So there is a little bit of savings there as well.
Mr. Chair, maybe if I can, with your hypothetical about what if the rates went down, it, by the way, it hasn't in my eighteen.
No, I have a long idea.
I've been involved on this, and I've, I've never seen it.
I mean, it's the first time I see dental go down.
Yeah, yeah.
Thirty-seven dollars.
Well, but it's, you know, it's based on a change in carriers, but, but the point being is, is my understanding of it is, whatever the new rate is, you know, the county has picked up 50%, and the employee has picked up 50%. So if the new rate were to drop, I would assume that would work the same way, that that the employer's share would drop 50% of that decrease, and the employee's share would drop 50%. So there would be mutual benefit by both the county and the employee in terms of premium costs.
That's, that's exactly right, and we even have that written into all the union contracts as well.
What if the dental rates went up $100?
We, no.
Well, we're, thankfully that they, yes, we would be looking around.
I mean, that's hypothetical.
Dental rates are usually pretty stable. Even when we had Minnesota, Blue Cross Blue Shield Minnesota, they didn't really go up that much. And the other thing is that we're self-insured for dental, so, you know, we set, we can basically set how much we want to set aside for dental premiums.
Okay, I was, I realize $100 is a probably outrageous amount, but I'm just saying if the dental rates go up.
Sure.
And insurance just stayed where it was at, that we, would we increase the cafeteria plan?
Yeah, we would have to look at it at that time, but thankfully, we are in a three-year, we have a three-year quote with Delta Dental, so we have another two and a half years before we have to look at that and potentially reconsider.
Well, the answer to that would be no, wouldn't it? If the, if the, if the health plan stayed the same and dental went up, there would be no increase to, to anybody.
Right.
Well, the increase would, would be to the employee who, because I think, what do we pay, the single portion of dental, the county?
Well.
How does that work now?
So for the, they're required to take the basic life, the dental, and the single health insurance, and that, then they get the county contribution, whether it's the single or the family plan, but we average, or we calculate the increase based off the health insurance. So if dental increased in three years and health didn't, let's say, then they wouldn't receive an increase based off the dental, because we calculate the health plan.
Right. And if we wanted to, to, you know, start trying to recalculate the whole county contribution, I'm sure that would go through the insurance committee and and the unions, because that would, all that, and all of that language is in the union contracts, so if we were to deviate from that at this point, which, not to say that we couldn't, but it would, we would take it through the insurance committee and the, and the unions.
Well, excuse me for asking these questions and stuff like this, but this is probably something I understand a little bit.
That's, that's good.
You lost me in the CARES Act and all that stuff. This I understand, and you know, and I just, just coming up with some questions concerning, you know, why we increase rates for something and not for others, and it's just.
Well, if I, I want to go back to this, because now, now I am a little bit confused here, and I want to get unconfused. So, so under the hypothetical, this year, if there would have been no cost increase to health insurance, then we would have seen no changes to
Correct.
the health, the health insurance premiums.
The county contribution would still be 310 for single.
And the employees would still be the same.
Yep.
Having said that, if at the same time, the dental went up by $100, there's still, that there's still going to be a cost share of that $100 increase by the, by the employee and the employer. Because, because right now, we're saying we have a decrease of $14 per single and a decrease of 37.50. Who's getting that? Who's getting that savings? Who's getting that, who's getting those?
Employee's going to get it.
Employee gets it.
Yeah.
Yeah, because they're paying the full dental. Because we're not, we're not paying half of the dental, we're paying whatever the calculation comes out for the health insurance. The dental is kind of, it's a standalone, even though it's, even though it's included in our, our package of county contribution, and we say that you have to have dental and you have to have health and life. But they would pay, it's kind of a standalone.
Yeah.
Okay, another question. Boy, got into something here. I'm a new employee, single, I took out the, the single dental plan, so my cafeteria plan is whatever I signed up for. I get married, and now I want the family plan. Do you increase my cafeteria plan?
Yes, so if you have a qualifying life event that would allow you to make an adjustment to your plan, whether that's getting married, divorced, having a child, under a loss of other coverage, you would be able to add an eligible, eligible spouse or dependents at that time, and then you would receive the family contribution as well. But you have to have them on your health insurance to receive that. So if you, if your spouse lost dental and you were just adding your spouse to your dental plan but not your health plan, you would still see, receive the single county contribution.
Right. And that's only because there's only one family county contribution. We don't have multi, we don't have two family county contributions.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I know we had a conversation in years prior about increasing, increasing the family participation rate, have we seen those numbers go up?
You know, I didn't, I don't have that with me today. I know we had it at the last meeting Darren and I were at when we proposed, talked about the dental renewal. I do, I believe we've had maybe a 10% increase for families overall this year, but primarily, we're still seeing the single enrollment.
And I think a lot of that has to do with who we're hiring. We're, we're hiring a lot of younger people that are, you know, they, they don't need family plans yet.
Yeah, a lot of the employees that we've hired this year that are full-time aren't married, or they don't have children, or if they are, their spouse has other coverage, so it's just best for their family if they didn't enroll in our family plans.
But we have seen some, it seems to be some more families taking the plan.
Yeah, if you would like the specific numbers, I can provide that.
I just, I, I know that you recapped that, and I forgot, I apologize. It will be interesting to see after enrollment.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's, that'll be an interesting time.
Yeah, and then speaking of open enrollment, I didn't mention initially, but our open enrollment this year will be from October 19th through November 6th. I did provide a calendar or a little schedule of different meetings that we'll be having, both individually and virtually. Unfortunately, our health representatives from Blue Cross aren't eligible to meet in person right now, just because of Blue Cross's restrictions with COVID-19, so all of, we will have all of our meetings virtual. We have reserved a room in the Family Service Center, since the rooms up here will be unavailable due to construction, so we'll have those meetings through Teams, or if people are unable to attend through Teams, but they're still interested in joining, they can join us in the Family Service Center for the designated times that are listed. There will be, after today's board meeting, we'll send out some communication to employees, just informing them of all of the changes that will be happening for 2021, as well as the schedule.
It's been a kind of a unique year, because as you probably know, we used to have the providers come in and talk, talk as a group or one-on-one and everything, and so with the change in venues here, most of it is going to be online and webinars, but we are going to try to record those.
Absolutely.
So that we can put them on our website, so if somebody can't attend those, they can certainly look at that as a recording later, if they're with their family or spouse or whatever, trying to decide what they want to do.
And then, yeah, in addition to that, although our representatives can't meet in person, they have all set aside times to meet on the phone or through Teams for one-on-one meetings if employees need that, in addition to the group meetings that are, will be held on the 20th, 22nd, and 28th.
Okay.
And then, oh, go ahead.
Okay, no, I just want to thank you for being patient with me, asking these questions, but every year, I sort of pick out a budget item, and I, you know, I try and, boy, try and save a little bit of money here, but it didn't work, okay.
Can we just have one additional thing then? We, when we met with Blue Cross a couple weeks ago, they brought to our attention some pharmacy changes, and what that means is that there's going to be an out-of-pocket, a change in the out-of-pocket process with specialty drug coupons. What had happened this year, which we are surprised it hadn't been caught before, but let's say an employee had a $500 prescription, and they went to the pharmacy, but the pharmacy had a $400 coupon. So what was happening is that the employee was paying the amount, let's say, so if the drug costs $500, but they had a $400 coupon, they were only paying $100. Well, what was happening is that the full $500 was being submitted to their insurance, so they were hitting their deductible without hitting their out-of-pocket cost. And that was, that was happening because the manufacturers, as they continued to raise the drug prices, they were providing these coupons so that employees or would continue purchasing their medication. So the coupon artificially accelerated their, incorrectly counted their out-of-pocket max. So to correct that, we would need to remove the further crossover, and what that would be, instead of the pharmacy or a provider directly submitting the bill and claims to further, the employee would have to either use their debit card or do a manual reimbursement. That would then remove the middleman so that they couldn't incorrectly submit the wrong charges.
And most of our employees have the debit card already, so I don't think that this is going to be a big change for anybody. I think, did you do any?
I didn't receive my report back that I had requested, so I don't know how many employees are currently participating in the crossover. However, if we were to remove the crossover with further, all of those employees would see, receive a letter directly from further, letting them know that they can no longer participate in that. Yeah, so it's kind of, it was a benefit for the employee, because they were hitting their deductible and maximums a lot faster than the plan intended, but then it's a disadvantage for both Clay County and Blue Cross, because the employee didn't necessarily hit their full deductible.
Keep on working, I'm confusing me, but catching up, okay.
Yeah, so basically, what the coupons were, the coupons were allowing the manufacturers or the providers to submit a higher claim than what the employee actually paid.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I would move the recommendations for renewal and changes of the cafeteria plan for 2021.
I'll second that. Okay, we got a motion by Kevin, second by Jim to approve the cafeteria plan for 2021. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Did you need a separate motion on that further thing, or?
I'm sorry, what was your question?
Did you need a separate motion on that?
No, as long as you, yeah, I think you guys were okay.
Do you want to do the contractor?
Oh, yes, I guess, in addition, that we, I forgot to mention, within our renewal will be, in the current calculation, would be the renewal of Steve Smith's contract. Steve Smith is our NIS benefit consultant, and his contract is up at the end of the year, so we, the calculation that's for the 21, 2021 premiums does include his renewal if approved. He has been a huge asset to the insurance committee, for he did the complete dental RFP, and has worked very closely with Lake's Co-op to help us with our renewal and things of that nature. So the insurance committee did support the recommendation for continuing his contract for 2021, if approved by the board today.
So who is Steve Smith, though?
He's our benefit, he's our benefit consultant.
I realize he's better, who's he with, or with?
He's with NIS, National Service, Insurance Services. He works out of the cities, and he was pretty instrumental last year in getting all of our, you know, when we had the market study and the county, county contribution, and doing all of that, helping us with all the numbers. He can gather a lot of that information that we either can't gather or don't have time to gather, and analyzing that. And then he also works with Lake's Country, too.
Okay, so what, you say we have a contract with him now. Is the contract the same for next year, is there increase?
No, it's the same.
Yeah, it would be the same, which is included in our, the 14% renewal already.
Yep.
Any further questions? Maybe they would like to take a motion on that one?
Didn't we have a motion? Oh, okay, I'll make a motion for it. Cancel.
Okay, we got a motion by Jim to approve the contract with Steve Smith. Did we get a second on that, I'm sorry?
I'll second.
We got a second from Grant. We get a second from Grant. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close. Okay.
All right. Thank you. I just want to say that Anna's been doing a great job. I've kind of neglected her, I think, this year because of CARES and tracking COVID and everything else. So, uh,
Yeah. It's been an interesting year, but I think it flowed smoothly actually.
I'm really, really happy that she's doing a great job and, and I think open enrollment's going to go as best as it can in the, in the conditions that we're at right now. So, thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Good work. Okay. We're going to committee reports. Let's see. Grant, you want to start us off today?
Uh, let's see. I had, um, uh, Dancing Sky, the Clay County Seniors meeting last week and, um, of course, like everything else, uh, there haven't been a lot of get-togethers with the Clay County Seniors, uh, in the last six or seven months. But I, everything's going pretty well. And there was an update from, uh, Dancing Sky and they've been staying on top of everything for the seniors. So I think all is, is pretty well in that area. Uh, let's see. What else did I have? Uh, I had an update meeting with Joel Paulson from the, uh, diversion authority on some issues that are going on with the diversion and I think that was it for me.
Jenny.
Thank you. Last week, on September 8th, I had a CARES committee. We talked about the closure of the first round of the business grant. We talked about, um, pursuing additional, an additional site for the DMV. Uh, and then a lot of the items that we talked about today, we talked about last week as well. I had the extension committee meeting, good information on, from them on how they're, uh, trying to stay busy with their remote, uh, working environment. A really good update from, uh, Randy Nelson and the Master Gardeners on, um, one, how the Master Gardeners have kept this campus looking so great. A lot of that was volunteer hours because of their face-to-face restrictions, um, for COVID. But Randy's really gotten out there and done some virtual, um, conferences and whatnot. That day I also had the Cass Clay Food Partners meeting. We talked a little bit about our, uh, new members. We have a new snapshot where we've talked about, um, some issues with pesticide use, um, and talked about maybe creating a subcommittee to just have a document where, um, citizens know where they can go to get more information on pesticide use on public grounds. Um, it wasn't really a, a discussion that would go either way, supporting or condoning, but rather to have a informed area for citizens. Thursday, I attended the AMC Fall Policy Conference. The first day of that, we had a, a pretty good update, um, from Office of Management and Budget on what the budget forecasting would be. Um, they're really, because of COVID, is a large portion of money, uh, revenue that is just gone and will take a significant amount of time to recover from that. There were some pretty good, um, supporting evidence to, as we've opened businesses back up, how those revenues have really jumped. We had a, uh, update on the state occupancy rates for hotels and those two had a obvious, a zero line and then jumped back up. And so while a lot of people aren't traveling out of state, it's, uh, seems to be that they're investing dollars in the local economy. So that's good. We had an update from Steve Simon on the elections and moving forward with that. I know because of our CARES Act committee, I've had discussions with Lori at the, the vast amount of work that that department is doing to make sure our elections are able to go forward, um, unhindered. And so it was a good update on that one. On Friday, I had a CARES committee update and, um, remind me again, did we just talk a little bit about the items that we did today? Oh, we had a meeting with the City of Morehead to have a, um, uh, update on how their first round of the small business came in, their plans moving forward. Clay County is committed to making sure that all businesses in Clay County are benefited from those grant dollars. And so it was decided out of that, that we will take the second round of that and I feel that's fair. We also, um, kind of talked a little bit about what businesses, what they're hearing from businesses, what we maybe had missed because of the parameters of the first round. And so what you, we talked about today really was reactive to what we heard from businesses. Both Commissioner Campbell and I, uh, were miffed that, uh, we didn't see any long-term care facilities apply for those first round of grants, but I think it really was because of the 24-hour care limiting that. So we're excited to offer that opportunity to that going forward. Yesterday, we also had a CARES committee update, talked more about, um, uh, what we talked about today, I guess. Uh, we continue to discuss possible DMV areas and, um, yeah, I think that covers it. Sorry. That I think is my, oh, yesterday, I apologize. Yesterday I also attended the, stop. The, um, AMC Environment and Natural Resources Fall Policy Conference, um, good information on our policy priorities. It is, that's a tricky way to have policy subcommittees, but, um, they're making it happen and we're just going to make the best of it. Thanks. That's it.
Okay.
All right. On, uh, September 8th, we had a CARES committee and I don't need to go over that any more than what's been done today. Um, on the 9th, uh, we, we had a solid waste construction meeting at the landfill. Uh, that thing's moving along nicely. We got a tour of the new area that's there and, uh, what we did today, we approved a, a new road that's going to go to the existing portion, um, of the landfill. And then there's another road that will be used for the new. So they'll have two access points. And nice thing about that is during the real windy days, we can use the lower one, you know, and be dumping into that lower area, uh, to help reduce the amount of litter that's being blown around on windy days.
I just had a question on that. I just realized we approved that, rebuilding that road. Do we have to take bits on that or?
Yeah. I, uh, well, it was an amendment to, um, my current contract. So I,
That was all part of the contract then, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, um, on the 10th, we, uh, we had a Lakes Country Service Cooperative meeting in, um, Fergus Falls. And of course, the top, you know, most of that, um, organization is involved with, uh, school districts. And so we, a lot of discussion on, on COVID-19 and policies, uh, that different school districts are having and issues that are going on, um, in that regard. And then on Friday, the 11th, we had a CARES Act committee meeting and I don't need to go over that anymore. It's been fully covered. And on the 14th, we had a CARES Act committee and we've gone over that extensively already. So I don't need to repeat.
Okay.
What all has been done. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On, uh, Wednesday, the 9th of September, along with Commissioner Wayland, I attended, uh, a virtual meeting of the Northwest Radio Emergency Communication Board. And we got a joint meeting with the RAC and, uh, there was a lengthy discussion of grants to purchase an additional 250 to 300 radios exclusively for FIRE and EMS in the 16th county and two tribal areas of the Northwest region. There's a hundred thousand dollars in grant money available to pay for them. And we upped the amount that they could spend, I think up to a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, we talked about mobile dispatch consoles where they can dispatch in the field, so to speak, with a laptop rather than having to go through all the, uh, infrastructure. And then we had reports from committees. And there was, uh, some discussion of, uh, um, potential civic unrest due to the Line Three pipeline and, uh, uh, other issues. And that's my report for that. And then on Thursday, September 10th, I went to the Clay County Soil and Water Conservation District meeting online again. And, uh, we heard all the, uh, eight different reports from the different, uh, members of that committee. And that's my report.
Hey myself, I went to, on Tuesday evening, I went to Felton for the Wellhead, um, meeting. There's a lot of discussion on water up there. Uh, people brought some samples of their water and, um, I don't know if I drank that or not, but, uh, uh, it was mostly on the Wellhead that, uh, the meeting was, uh, and with that, I see that on my portfolio. I don't have Felton Water, Wellhead in there.
Make a motion to add that to Commissioner Rose's portfolio. Would you?
Okay. I got a motion by Jenny, seconded by Jim to add the Felton Wellhead onto my portfolio. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, like I said, it was, it's pretty much a lot of discussion on, on the water in Felton. A very interesting discussion. Uh, Wednesday morning I had the extension, which Jenny's already talked about. Uh, also I would like to remind that when Ben was talking about, there's just a lot of webinars available and extension. I don't know if people in Clay County are taking advantage of all those webinars available or not. I mean, there's just a lot of information on there, uh, concerning stuff going on. I mean, the stuff that University of Minnesota is presenting to people. Uh, after that, I attended the last part of the Wild Rice Watershed meeting. Um, there again, mostly discussion, a lot of discussion on the Hendrick and all, all set projects, along with just the regular meeting items. Thursday, we had interviews, continued interviews with Assistant Planning Director. And yesterday I attended the AMC discussion on general government. They had some very good, uh, presentists. Debbie Erickson from Crow Wing County talked a lot about, uh, uh, the elections coming up, uh, absentee ballots and stuff like that. And, and she was indicating pretty much that the final thing, the final vote count on the November 3rd, that's probably not going to be available for another week after the, after the, they can't make a declaration of who's going to win or lose, at least a, a week after the election. So, so, I mean, they're talking right now, the final results won't be available the seven days after. Um, we're talking about a drop box that needs to be secured, uh, out in the lobby as far as people putting their absentee ballots in there. So, uh, and it almost has to be one person, like a person can drive, drive up and put a ballot into the drop box, but you, that one person can only bring three ballots. You know, you can't go grab, have a whole bunch of absentee ballots and bring them and put them in that drop box. So each person bringing one up, uh, can only put three, three absentee ballots in there. Other things that were discussed, um, the higher rate of unemployment, there was, Minnesota, the highest rate was 9.9% earlier this year. It's now down to 7.7%. Another important item we had was the CARES Act. I realize we talked a lot about the CARES Act, but, uh, Bruce Meslet and, uh, Tim Dolan from Sherburne County and they talked a lot about it and they had a good example of their CARES Act. And if any counties need some assistance, I think they'd be glad that, they said we should, you know, counties haven't done anything yet to get ahold of some county that has a lot of stuff done on it. Uh, they were talking about, uh, which I spoke about before today, was really have documentation available for this CARES Act, you know, so, um, that was going to be an important item. So, okay. Those are my meanings. Steve?
I think, Mr. Chair, uh, attended Corona Relief Fund Committee meetings on the 8th, 11th, and 14th that have been discussed. On Tuesday last week, I met with Ben Metzen from Construction Engineers, Joel Olson, Mark Sloan, and Tim Dent on our multipurpose community meeting space. Uh, they're going to begin construction on that next week. Um, on the 10th, I had a management meeting. Uh, we had a COVID update from Kathy, CARES discussion and discussed open enrollment, upcoming, open enrollment. Uh, on the 14th, well, throughout the last week, as far as CARES work, we've had a lot of contacts with cities and townships, uh, under, uh, 200, uh, citizens. So that, uh, goes to our, our cities' account of 86,161. And we'll be bringing some of those to our, uh, agenda tomorrow for discussion. Just a reminder, I think the last time the state provided an update, uh, we had town, we had nine townships in Clay County that, uh, still had not certified, uh, for, for the funding that was directly allotted to them. Today is the deadline for that. And so, uh, if you would submit today, you'd still be eligible to receive those funds. Uh, we did have, uh, Gabe Tweaton from our committee did reach out to, uh, each of those, uh, townships individually, uh, in hopes of, uh, getting them to do that. Uh, there's a meeting scheduled next, uh, September 21st, uh, in hopes of, that there's still one last shot at a bonding bill. Uh, and so we'll see if that, if they can come to any agreement. Uh, I shared some information, uh, with you during the past week. Uh, we've continued to have some different issues with our detox facility as far as insurance claims and water issues. And so I, I know we have a number of different things that are going on, uh, right now. Uh, but I would, uh, ask consideration or discussion on, on bringing our building committee back just to have a discussion on, on detox. Uh, and if there's a, I know we vetted, vetted it a lot as committees, uh, but if that was something that the, the board felt we needed to do.
Okay. Anything further from?
Mr. Chair, um, one, uh, one last thing on my, uh, when I was out at the landfill for that construction meeting, um, it was brought to my attention, uh, the month of August, uh, we had paid out $24,696 to the city of Fargo for leachate hauling. Um, in talking with Kirk, um, I, I think in the past, there may have been some discussions with Morehead about the potential, uh, and I, I don't know if their waste water plant can handle that type of leachate or not, but it, it would seem to me that, um, we should have that discussion again. Uh, there's a potent, you know, if you calculate that out times 12 months, that's $296,000 in potential revenue, um, you know, that could stay on this side of the river. You know, so I, so Steve, I don't know if maybe you could, um, reach out with the City of Morehead to see if, and if there, why there hasn't been interest? Is it because the plant can't handle that type of leachate? I don't know, but I think it's worthy of checking into. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
For your turn.